We're officially called to order regular meeting Coachella Water District Board of Directors, October 12th, 2021 in Palm Desert. And I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing. The public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. The meeting will be streamed live on the district's website. And as stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda may provide comments in person, at the meeting, or via Zoom. I don't know, I should check now, but do we have any public comments that we're aware of at this time?
No, Mr. President, not at this time.
Thank you. And then, I believe we have all, all of the board members attending the meeting are present in person. So I don't think we need to worry too much about getting their attention because they're sitting right here. So we'll do that. And why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be absent for this meeting. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Are we aware of any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, none of them brought to mind.
And once again, anyone wishing to make public comment, now would be the time. I guess we have a raise hand feature on Zoom in case there's anybody there.
And we do not have any participants online at this time for public comment.
Good. That brings us to the consent calendar. Items 5A through E.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item D.
D is indicted. I'll make a motion to approve the remaining.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed 4-0. So, all right, 5D, this is the payment for the annual water rights permit fees to State Water Resources Control Board.
So just a couple of questions. Usually we pay those under protest, and I noticed it seemed like it was a little different this year, and also we're paying on 1.4 million acre feet, and that's not what we receive on an annual basis.
So we do pay based on the full diversion right, and that amount is much larger than we actually get, and that's how we've been doing it. This year, you're right, we didn't include the protest. We worked with BBK. There has been a recent decisions in a longstanding court case that ultimately led to us not including that protest statement.
So we consider that a success?
No, it just means we're going to continue paying these water rights even though they're for a federal water supply.
Right.
Okay. Because wasn't the, wasn't the, maybe you could comment on that, Jeff? I mean, I thought the concern was that we're paying, you know, state water rights for federal water.
And I'm very sorry, my colleague Steve Anderson is the one who has been working with Mr. Bagley on this, so I, I don't have any particular to that. I can certainly get them if, if wished, unless Steve, you want to convey anything.
Yeah, you know, it's, it was challenged, and over the years, they, the state maintains that they have the right to charge that fee. And they believe it is commensurate with the work that they have to do to administer those rights. So it was challenged, and it was appealed, and ultimately, there was a decision that led to the state's fees being just validated, yeah.
And I can certainly provide a brief update at the next General Counsel's report about that, and provide anything in writing that, that we put together on that issue.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve that item?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thanks.
Sounds like kibble. Get the hamster wheel out?
Okay, 7A, written communications. We did have one that was included in the board packet. Its status is resolved with some, with a response provided by Human Resources. Any, were there any others? I didn't see anything else. Nope. Good, on to action items. We are flying through this meeting. 8A, David Wilson, good morning.
Morning. Purpose of this item is to approve the solicitation of, sorry, can you hear me okay? Purpose of this item is to approve the solicitation of bids for the Whitewater River Stormwater Channel bank protection upstream of Cook Street. The project, as you see here, is on the north bank of the Whitewater River Stormwater Channel. It's approximately 26, 2,500 linear feet of concrete slope protection and intended. It's the last reach, if you will, within the city, city of Palm Desert, with the exception of the area that will be improved as part of the replenishment facility next to the Work 4 project. The construction cost estimate does require, in the event that the bids come in, in line with that, a budget amendment, which we will bring to you when the bids come in. And I'll just leave it at that and take any questions.
This is, is this right where we had the sewer leak?
Yes.
Okay. So that probably would have just scoured behind it if we had the...
Yeah, this, in that instance, the slope protection would not have...
Done anything.
Not done much.
Yeah, this is just for...
This is for scour. It's on the outside of a curve within the channel, so there is some potential for, for scour. It does provide some, some protection for those sewer lines that are in there. And it, and it provides additional access to facilities and maintenance to come in and maintain the channel. They have no access between here all the way up to, I think it's Monterey, to do any, any maintenance in this area.
Why wasn't it ever done before?
You know, I don't know, that's a, I don't have the answer to that question.
I mean, this is, this is, this is flooded out, you know, forever and ever, and you'd have think that had been done, but...
You know, they didn't have it when they built that expansion of the Palm Desert High School on the south side. They didn't have it there either. They had to, remember that? They had to actually wait to occupy those buildings until they finished the slope protection. And they built that, I mean, that wasn't that long ago, they built those buildings, what, maybe 10 years ago or something.
Yeah, you're right, the other side didn't have it. I used to run that.
They didn't have it.
David, on the, on the south side of the channel, is that piece between the high school and, and Rebecca Road, I guess it is, or no?
Is it lined?
Is it, is that line there?
It is.
It is? Okay, it's just covered up?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Where are we on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Thanks, David. 8B. Hi, Steve. Go ahead.
Good morning. So 20 years ago, Congress lifted their hold on EPA's rule to lower the arsenic standard from 50 parts per billion to 10 parts per billion. That then triggered work that we did to install our first water treatment plant on a drinking water system, and that was a couple of truck-sized cargo containers, testing a new ion exchange treatment process that would reduce the amount of brine produced. And that was installed at the well site 7991. So now here we are today, we're completing the environmental work that consists of the certifications and filings of the SEQA documents so that we can replace that system and improve the well pump at that same site. It's performed well, but it was in cargo containers and never expected to last forever. The draft environmental study and mitigated negative deck has been prepared to satisfy SEQA and the federal requirements under NEPA that are triggered because we have requested those state grants that come from federal dollars. So it does include those provisions. One comment letter was received from South Coast Air Quality Management District during the comment period that ended September 20th. Their comments have been addressed. There were no changes needed to our mitigation monitoring and reporting program that is also part of what you'll be approving today. We have Woodward and Kearns Project Manager Robin Court online. She's prepared a comprehensive presentation that was in your package, and she'd be happy to go over any of the slides or not. It's your pleasure. And she is also available just to answer any questions. So at this time, we're just requesting that we have your approval for the, to certify that environmental document.
To do those three things that are on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm all right without the presentation.
Yes, I'm fine, too.
This is good.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Thanks, Steve. C.
So we're up.
Oh, this is our teleconference. All right, Jeff, go ahead.
Actually, I will defer first to our board clerk.
Oh.
Sure. So, good morning, members of the board. Before you, today we have a resolution for your consideration to consider the option for the board to continue remote teleconferencing based on AB 361, which was passed by, or excuse me, was signed by the governor on September 16th. AB 361 allows agencies to continue to meet remotely during proclaimed state of emergencies under modified Brown Act requirements that are similar to, are similar but not identical to the rules and procedures established by the Brown Act orders. The recommendation before you is to adopt ordinance 2021-24, I believe?
41.
41, excuse me, I don't have that in front of me, which would allow the board to continue to hold online meetings past the September 30th deadline. That was established by the executive orders by the governor. We would then require to return to the board every 30 days to allow you to continue the extension of remote meetings. And then I'll turn it over to Jeff if he has anything else to add.
I, I think that covers it. Just a couple of other things, the AB 361 does provide that the public must be, have the opportunity to log on and participate during public comment for each item on the agenda, knowing that some folks may be logging on, it might take a few minutes. We already have that practice here, so that's not really any change. And the other is, is that in the past, during the COVID pandemic, some agencies required the public comments be sent via email. Now that, that cannot be required, we can certainly provide that opportunity, but the public needs to have access to the meeting as the meeting goes along virtually as well, so.
One other, I think, Jeff, if, if I recall, is a requirement that under AB 361, if we do have any technology issues and members are not able to either hear or see us, we have to pause the meeting to resolve those technology issues...
Right.
...before we can resume the meeting.
Correct.
So to ensure that members of the public do not miss any of the discussions or votes of the board, so that is just one difference.
Which we've also done.
Which we've also done. We try and do as best we can. Correct.
And this is just an option to have the virtual meetings, so the virtual access. If, if you were not to adopt this resolution, then if a board member wanted to participate virtually going forward, we'd have to revert to the old rules, which had you have to post an agenda at wherever you're located, provide access to the public there, all of those things, which during COVID was not really recommended, or most people don't wish to do. So as long as the COVID state of emergency is, is in effect by the governor, the overall proclamation, AB 361 allows for virtual meeting access if a resolution is in place along the lines of what's being proposed today.
Okay. Well, I think it's probably necessary. I don't, I don't love the virtual, but, but it seems to be a, a good fix for the time being while people are either distancing or quarantining or whatever they have to do.
And again, this will come to the board every 30 days...
Yeah.
...until the board elects to not, to discontinue remote meetings. So if in a couple of months, the board decides that we would like to return to full in-person meetings, then the board has the option to not adopt that resolution at that time.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll move the resolution approval.
Second. Good. Yeah, and I think I'll be taking advantage of it the first meeting in November, so, for what that's worth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, we're moving. Board member general comments.
So I guess I'll start.
Yeah, oh yeah, start down at that end.
I, let's see, I don't have that many comments except for, great to see a little snow on the mountains.
Did that meet the contest? Was it?
I don't know if it met the contest.
I looked up there this morning, and I thought, huh. Because I think they have to get an inch, right?
Yeah, an inch.
It is, really.
At Long Valley. I wonder if they got it.
Might have.
Yeah.
Yeah, might have. Pretty close. So, great to see the snow. The only comment I have is on Friday, I'm going to be a state witness for the Colorado River Board of California at the Subcommittee on Water, Oceans, and Wildlife Committee of the House Natural Resources, so...
That'll be on Friday.
...on drought responses for the West, so that's all I can...
Good.
Good luck.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that on Thursday, this Thursday, and then again, the first week of November, I'm going to be doing three virtual tours sponsored by the Water Foundation, virtual Northern California tour, Central Valley tour, and virtual headwaters tour. So I'd much rather be doing those in person, but they're not offering those, so I'll be doing those via Zoom.
Okay, good.
No comments.
Good, good. All right, yeah, I think I'm going to pass on the comments, too. So let's get into the meeting report. September 30th, Director Aguilar, you had the ledge, did you have the ledge meeting that day?
We did, we did. And I have a couple of notes I just wanted to mention, and then later in the meeting, I believe Victoria's going to be giving a, and perhaps Katie's will, a more comprehensive presentation on legislative issues, so I'll just mention a couple of things. We did meet with our lobbyist and with our staff, reviewed a whole host of bills, both at the state and the federal level. We were informed, and the board probably knows that legislature has adjourned for the year, so several water bills that were introduced are now going to be reintroduced to the next session. We also discussed the federal infrastructure and Jobs Act package, which is stuck in reconciliation talks now, and Congress has adjourned for this week, so we'll probably hear more about that, but it's not looking terribly promising at, at the moment. And with that, that will conclude my comments until we hear later from Victoria.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the Finance Committee on the first?
So, yes, so the, I'll take that one as well. The, we've had the Finance Committee with our staff and, and also with our investment portfolio managers. We had a significant, actually really excellent presentation that Carrie did on our borrowing alternatives, which is really interesting and good to hear. We had a grant and loan update as well, and I thought it was worthy to note that we've, staff has successfully been awarded about 185 million altogether in major funds over the last four years for capital improvements. I thought that was very, very impressive. And then just on the, on the public finance performance on our investment portfolio, again, we've exceeded all of our benchmarks, which I think is good news. And, and also, I did have a brief exchange of emails with, with Jeff and with, and with Jim regarding getting the full investment performance portfolio reports to the board and maybe doing a verbal presentation at some point in the future. So that will come back to us in more detail.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I know we see some of that in the monthly general managers' report, including the balances and rate of return. That's good, thank you. Let's see, Director Estrada's not here. We did have a listed there, October 5th, oh yeah, CBWD presentation at La Quinta City Council Meeting. And I did attend that, I don't know if you were on there, but...
I was on the Zoom call, yeah.
I wasn't on the Zoom, I was on the other thing that they had. They had two ways to participate, and 20, I don't know if they knew it at the meeting, but at 24 minutes, that thing went dead. So I was there for 24 minutes, and then I was clicking and clicking and nothing happened. And, and I didn't feel like logging in on the Zoom, so I, I was done, but...
I, I attended, John, it started at 4:00 and then went through a number of, yeah, there was a number of just, you know, statutory things they had to do, and, and that's probably when you got cut off.
Well, they had, they had these people coming and doing three minutes each of the slideshow.
Right.
And I think it was maybe on the third person that it cut out.
Okay. And they were very well organized in their, in their messaging about the, mostly about lights and water use and their opposition of the project and the traffic, and it was, it was very interesting to hear that, you know, I, and many of them had said, yeah, I've been around the valley for 10 to 12 years, and, and, you know, I've been around the valley for about 35 years, John, you've been here all your life, and I'm thinking, you know, you know, people come in and, and they have this conception that all development should be just like theirs, because that's what they were saying in...
Yeah.
And so it was, it was very interesting, and, you know, I, I appreciated the, the presentation you made, Katie. I mean, it was, it was very good, it was very well organized, and at 5:30, I had another commitment I had to get to, so I left at 5:30, and I didn't hear if there were any comments after that, so I'd be curious to know if there...
There were not the city council, the, the, or, or anyone with comments or questions to contact that we are, which some people have.
Okay.
But the comments that's...
Right. I mean, they were attacking the calculations on evaporation in the desert. I mean, it was, it was, it was pretty far out there, so I'm, I'm glad we made the presentation. It was a very good and, and with good information, backed up with a lot of science, and it was a good job on the district. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, no, I get the optics on a wave park in the desert, which is the same as anything in the desert, is that if you don't plan for these water uses, then you probably shouldn't be doing them. But I, hopefully, what you said was that we did plan for these water uses, and so we have the ability to do them in a sustainable way. And, you know, that includes golf and farming and...
Absolutely.
And, you know, taking a bath and doing all the things that people do which use water, you know, and, and it's, it's interesting, because I get the thought process. It's like, they told me not to run the water when I brush my teeth, and, and that's a valid position, because you shouldn't run the water when you brush your teeth, because it's just wasting water. But just like any project or any activity, you should do it in a smart way that doesn't waste, that isn't wasteful.
Absolutely.
And the fact that you're brushing your teeth with a water op doesn't mean that you shouldn't put in a, another hole of golf or, or anything else, because we have the water to do those things. Anyways, it's, but I get, I get the optics are terrible on it, because the headlines sound terrible.
The perception is bad, and I, I think that really the value of the presentation that we gave really had to do with our long-term planning, which was, you know, Zoe spent a lot of time talking about how we have now come, our, our public draft is out for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Plan, Alternative Plan for the Indio Subbasin, and there was a comment, actually, from one of the council members who said, "It seems like we're in great shape." And we responded to that by saying, "Yeah, we're in great shape, but not because we can just sit here and rest on our laurels. We have, the plan that we have involves conservation efforts, long-term planning, ensuring we have sustainable supplies, making sure we're doing source substitution, recycled water." So things like, while it may seem trivial, things like turning off the water when you brush your teeth are an example of using water efficiently. So while we do have a plan which will allow us to continue to grow and develop and meet the demands of our customers, we also have, in order to meet those things, one of the components is ensuring water use efficiency.
Oh, it's, it's so true, and I, I, you know, I do a lot of bike riding on the East Valley and around that area. In fact, I rode Sunday morning, I rode by the, the project site and went through a number of the, around and through a number of the developments around the area. And, you know, that we're, we're, I think, the, the fear that I have in the messaging is that, yeah, we're okay, you know, we're, we planned for this, and so, all right, everybody else sits back and says, "Well, I don't have to do anything." And when asked to maybe remove some grass, put it into water-efficient landscaping, then, you know, there's a resistance to that, right? Well, you said we were okay, and so it's, it's tough, but as I, as I ride through those areas and through the green belts, you know, in the beltways where there's grass that's, you know, they're with that two inches of water out in the street, I'm thinking, is this a very efficient use of the water? And then I write down Madison, which is a beautiful area between Avenue 54 and Avenue 52, and it's, it's just, it's stunning how, how beautiful it is, and it's all lush and efficient or, or desert-friendly. And it's using less water, and, and so, you know, as we're in a community, we're, we're in it together, we're not really, you know, I don't look at it as, you know, developments of us versus them, but, but, you know, everybody has a right to develop their property, and, and so, you know, a golf course and a wave park are probably going to use very similar amounts of water in the long run, and, and the wave park might even be less.
And I'd also like to note that over the last decade, there's probably been five proposals or more for wave parks in the Coachella Valley, and not one of them has moved one shovel of dirt.
Yeah. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see, and, you know...
Some of them will, though.
But, but this is a new technology, and it's, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, and it's not just a water park, so to speak, so, I don't know, I'm, I wish them luck and, and good report.
Isn't the, just to be clear, because I ended up missing much of it, isn't the wave park that they're proposing, the Kelly Slater one, isn't that roughly seven holes of golf as far as the amount of, do they know? I thought there was a number that was out there, something like seven holes of golf.
Okay.
So if there was originally an 18-hole golf course planned, and now it's, and now it's a wave park, you're using, you know, roughly a third of what would have been used. Yeah. I know the one, the one at Desert Willow was a lot less, you know, like one, yeah.
Again, just to remind folks, our presentation to La Quinta was not about a specific project, although the public comments were definitely aimed at that project.
Yeah.
We were there to talk about the bigger picture of water management and how the Indio Subbasin has been sustainably managed through the board's efforts, imported water, and, and what the community itself is contributing.
That's right, because that's very important to note, that CBWD does not approve, does not say yes or no to the projects we decide if we have water available.
Correct.
Well, appreciate all the work on that. So 11th, just the last one listed here, there was a...
Yesterday.
...meeting yesterday that I attended with Jim Barrett on a concept for a tribal utility authority, which I thought was, was worthwhile.
Yeah, very early stages, and, you know, at some point, when we get a little bit more meat on the bones, we'll bring that back for consideration by the full board.
Which tribe was that?
29 Palms.
Yeah, and then other meetings, I mean, I'll just start. Also, on the 5th, Director Estrada and I met with Dave Smith, who's the golf course planner for this project that's out in the Oasis area. And subsequent to that, we met on October 7th with staff regarding the same topic we met here, and I think, first of all... And I think, first of all, appreciate staff, Kerry, and who else is here that was there? I think just Kerry's here right now. That, and David Wilson and Jim, for just keeping, I know there's a lot of, that goes into approval of the, the storm flows. So we were just, we were really just talking about how to keep that timeline moving. It sounds like the project is, has a sense of urgency. And that's, that would be a customer in the, on the Oasis, eventually a customer on the Oasis expansion area there. Okay, others, any other meetings?
Yeah, John, on September 29th, I had a lower basin principles meeting that was originally scheduled in Las, in Las Vegas. Robert came to it, and I participated via Zoom. It was a report out on our four committees of potential sources of conservation, and we're looking at the multi-species habitat conservation adjustments in the drought period there. And so it was a fairly short meeting, what I did.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the, per diem, for the meetings reported on?
I'll make the motion.
Second. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passed for us. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. Yeah, all developments seem to have a sense of urgency until they don't, which is surprising. On the COVID side, 110 recovered positive cases, we've got one current positive case, three direct contacts, two mortalities, four people off work right now, the one positive and the three direct contacts. We've had one case so far in October. Seventy-three percent of the workforce is fully vaccinated, 27% are not. We have developed a vaccine policy, which I can share with the board, it's been submitted to all the bargaining units. Meet and confer process begins this week. We had 18 vaccine information sessions over the last two weeks, where I specifically spoke to 520 employees. We've got a couple of stragglers that will get in, about 32, I think we're looking to schedule, once I get back in town. And that, that is it for me, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I don't want to steal any, any of the, of the report on, from the Ledge Committee, but I, I did want to focus on SB 323, which was signed by the governor, and it implements 120-day statute of limitations for challenging new or increased water and sewer rates. Before SB 323 was signed, a plaintiff seeking to challenge a water or sewer rate could generally bring an action for a refund, or could seek to invalidate rates going back three years.
Wow.
Now, with the enactment of SB 323, anybody challenging a new or increased water or sewer rate must bring that action with 120 days of the effective date or the date of final passage of the adoption of the new fee or the increased fee. In order to have this statute of limitations go into effect, future Prop 218 notices must include a statement explaining this new requirement. SB 323 is not unique in that most other fees and charges not subject to 218, such as water connection fees, facilities fees, capacity fees, already have 120-day statute of, of limitations, period. So this wasn't something that was just pulled out of whole cloth, it is something that one would argue is actually consistent with challenging other types of fees and charges. And then one last thing, my partner, Luthi Karouf, who you refer from via Zoom in regard to rates and charges issues, he was instrumental in the drafting of this and then working through Aqua, as well as the Ledge, as the other sponsors of the bill, in order to draft it and to get it through. So wanted to mention that as well. That's what I have to do, Mr. President.
Thanks. Yeah, that's a big change, though, going from three years to four months.
Which, and it goes to effect for new rates and charges increased after January 1, 2022.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe gives you a chance for a bit more stability or predictability. So departmental report, do we? There we are. Victoria? Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So what Sylvia was just passing out to you is an updated priority bill list as of yesterday. And so the end of the legislative year was actually Sunday, October 10th, that was when the governor's signing period ended, and therefore the legislative year is over. The legislature will resume January 3rd, 2022. A few highlights from our legislative meeting on September 30th, in, in addition to Director Aguilar's comments, AB 818 was successfully passed and signed by the governor as well, and that's related to flushable wipes. So starting in 2022 as well, you'll see a "Do Not Flush" label affixed on products that have so far been labeled as flushable. So that's a huge win for the district, as we know, as we've seen through COVID, flushing these wipes does damage our system and, and create a lot of staff time. Another item to note is SB 155, which is the Public Resources Budget Trailer Bill. A few, two items here that specifically addressed water is the disconnection for non-payment of your water bills was extended from September 30th till the end of this year. And then also, within the SAFER program, SB 155 expanded the definition of TA, or Technical Assistance Providers, to include community water systems. And so that's, that's a huge win for us, too, as we look to our eastern Coachella Valley and consolidating of smaller at-risk systems as well. Of note, which you may have heard of, AB 1021 by Assembly Member Mays was vetoed by the governor on October 5th. And the governor's veto message, he did mention that he took exception to the short timeline, despite the study being funded within fiscal year 2022. He did mention that the LAFCO study being funded in the budget, he explicitly mentioned that he hopes the study still moves forward as expeditiously as possible. And also, being that the funds for the study are allocated in the '22 budget, they must be expended within that timeframe as well for the study. Brief update, not really much to report, but on the $7 million allocation, in the budget allocation for the Avenue 66 project, we are in talks as well with Chris Kahn, with the Department of Water Resources and the Department on Finance, to develop a plan in order to disperse those funds and get the, the project moving. Before I move on to federal, are there any questions on the states?
No, good so far.
All right, lovely, thank you. So on the federal side, the House of Representatives, they're still working to getting the votes needed in order to pass the infrastructure bill. This is a bill we're also monitoring closely, we've been working with the Information Systems Department, as well as BBK, Anna and Lowry, regarding potential cybersecurity funding opportunities that come through the infrastructure bill and other funding opportunities as well. The Interior Environment Bill, which houses the 2.7 million allocation that Congressman Ruiz was successful in obtaining for CBWD, we are still waiting on a budget framework for the House and Senate to agree on that. They did pass a continuing resolution to fund the government until December 3rd. So we'll, we're still in the waiting game and definitely a holding pattern. But between now and then, they'll continue to negotiate and determine how to proceed for fiscal year '22 levels. So long, long answer short, holding pattern. Just a few items of note as well, last week, the Senate held a hearing focusing on the drought on the western part of the United States. And this week, the House is having a hearing on the Colorado River, I believe, Director Nelson, you mentioned that. So what we can gather from that is Congress is, you know, they are focusing on the drought conditions here on the western portion of the United States. And CBWD and BBK, we remain in close communications, should anything develop of particular interest to CBWD, and roping in appropriate staff members for that as well. That concludes my report, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
If I may, there was one thing I did forget to mention, Victoria, you're okay, this is something else. Although it is Aqua, there are, we did have Region 9 elections, we submitted to vote on the slate that the nominating committee put forward, which has Patrick O'Dowd as Vice President. The Aqua elections for President and Vice President are coming up in the December meeting, and we will have Katie Evans as our floor, I guess, delegate. It is important to have somebody there in case there are nominations from the floor for President and Vice President. Right now, the nominating committee for Aqua President and Vice President has Pam Tobin, who is the current Vice President, moving up to President, and Kathy Green from Orange County is nominated as Vice President. Patrick is trying to put forward a floor nomination to challenge for the Vice Presidency. I don't know how that will carry, but we'll have Katie there as our delegate if President Powell concurs with that recommendation moving forward.
I think I just signed something that...
I think you did, too. Which reminded me that I had to talk about it.
So, yeah.
Jim, do you know when the last time there was a floor challenge?
Yeah, it was two elections ago when Kathy Teagues basically replaced Pierre Swan as the Vice Presidential Candidate, and then she moved up. And in her election, Steve Lamar was the Vice Presidential Candidate, and that carried forward as the nominating committee had recommended. And then Steve Lamar and Pam Tobin, I think, were also straightforward nominees from the, from the committee. So I, I don't know how successful Patrick's challenge will be, and as far as I know, I think he's the only, I guess, legitimate challenge that's, that's working through the process now. But I think we did provide, I don't, did we provide a resolution in support of him? Okay. Yeah, I was trying to figure out, well, he's no longer one of us, so was the resolution really from us or from the Saltonsee? It has to come from the Saltonsee Authority in order for him to be seated. I think the, or it's not the Saltonsee Authority, it's that other agency in Tularay, I guess, that...
That agency.
Yeah, Dudley Ridge. That, that resolution has to come from them in order for him to sit.
And ours was simply a resolution of support for his, to the nominating committee, to select him as the nominee, which then they did not do.
Correct. Correct. Sorry, messed that up a little bit, but...
Yeah, it's good. All right, is that it for department reports?
Yes, sir. Unless I see somebody else jumping to their feet, I don't see that.
You have time, now's your chance.
We may need a, a five-minute break, I, we've moved very quickly through the agenda, so I'm trying to get the attorneys on, online that we'll need for closed session.
We can cover, I think Scott Hunter has a labor negotiation.
He actually is not, is on his way, and as I understand, will not be here till 10:00.
Oh, Jay.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm trying to see who I can get on, on the line as quickly, so if we, you'll have about five minutes before we go into closed, if you, if you mind, please.
All right. Good. So at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items on the agenda, and we will reconvene here to report out of closed session after we do those items. So the regular meeting is reconvened, we have a report out of closed session, and Council Fera is going to handle the details of that.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On item 11A, regarding the claim, the first claim regarding the Iraq rate, on a motion by Director Aguilar, second by Director Nelson, a vote of 401, the board took action to return the claim without action as partly untimely, and to reject it otherwise on its merits. On the second claim listed, on a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Aguilar, and a vote of 401, the board took action to return the claim without action as partly untimely, and to otherwise reject it on its merits. There was no reportable action on items B, C, or D.
Thank you. And hearing that we have no further business and hearing no objection, we are adjourned.